All right.
You're ready.
Thank you, David. I will call this meeting of the Planning Board Development Regulation Subcommittee to Order on Thursday, August 27, 2020, at 12:33 PM. I always forget. Do we start with the roll call?
I think we start with the rules for public open electronic meetings, and I can do that if you'd like.
Please do.
Okay. Good afternoon. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued March 23, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Planning Board's Development Regulations Subcommittee is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum present, physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with our emergency order 12, we have taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as a communication platform. All members of the Development Regulation Subcommittee have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate in the meeting by visiting LebanonNH.gov/live and clicking on the pertinent listed meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves before beginning to speak. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, please ensure your microphones are muted unless you are asking a question or making a comment. If you are participating by telephone, please note that you may use star six to mute and unmute yourself. If anyone has a problem during with access during the course of the meeting, please email planning@lebanonnh.gov. Staff will do its best to address the issue. In the event that there are technical difficulties and we are unable to hold the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. The meeting will begin by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under RSA 91A, and I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, David. So we'll start with the roll call. I'm here, obviously. Matt Hall, and I'm alone. Kathy?
This is Kathy, and I'm here and alone.
Tom?
Tom is here and playing on my new laptop. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, we can.
Okay.
And I don't.
A comma in my name. Yeah.
You're breaking up a little bit, Tom.
We're getting a lot of feedback.
You're getting feedback.
Getting a lot of distortion and feedback.
How is it now?
Better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. That's great. And we'll see if Joan joins as we go. So next on the agenda would be approval of minutes. So June 19 and August 7. Did anyone have any comments for either set of minutes? Kathy, were you raising your hand?
Um, no. Actually, I actually didn't have time to look at them.
Tom, did you have any thoughts?
Trying to unmute. Can you hear me now? Is that listening on?
Whew. Tom, that's pretty bad.
Hold on. Can you hear me now? There's still.
There's an echo.
Okay. I didn't see any problems with.
Tom, can you call in maybe? And keep your video up so you can you can see things, but mute mute the mute your screen and then listen, listen in by phone or participate by phone. Do we hide? I don't know if we have a phone number. We should, right? We do have a telephone number.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's on the live webpage.
Tom, if you can hear it, I got the phone number if you want to write it down.
A second. Go for it.
Hey, Matt.
Yo.
Um, we were gonna chat for a few minutes after this meeting, but I forgot I have a.
You guys, conference ID number.
Yeah.
It is 278-473-80, and then pound sign.
Please.
Yeah, Tim, Tim, that's fine. Do you want to? I'm gonna be a bit tied up tomorrow. Can you talk Monday?
Um, yeah, absolutely. Monday. Oh, no, sorry. I'm actually out of the office on Monday. Uh, blah, blah, blah. Well, let's see what time we the I signed up for a webinar at two.
I hope it can be done before then.
Okay. All right. Yeah, great. Perfect.
What's the topic today?
The topic today is subdivision regulations and the re I guess I would they would I would staff I would call something else. I kind of call it the rewriting of them, basically.
Do you have those in front of you? Kathy, the.
What section is it?
Well, it's it's um, I there's a there was a red line version attached. I think that was included with the agenda packet.
I can print it out.
Okay. David or Rebecca, where do we where are those available online? I don't I don't see them in the Agenda Center. Maybe I just keep missing them, but like the the Subcommittee. Where are the Subcommittee agenda materials? It's it's under Planning Board.
Okay.
The Subcommittee is under the Planning Board header, and it's attached as item 3A.
If you download the full packet.
Hey, Tom, is that you on the phone?
Yes, it is me on the phone. All right, guys. I I'm not sure what the deal is.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Okay.
Well, before now that we're I think before we jump into the to 3A. So, Tom, were you saying you didn't really have any concerns about the minutes?
Right. I had read them, and I just think there's needed to be changed.
Okay, well, would someone like to make a motion to approve the June 19 and August 7 minutes?
I would like to approve the we move make the motion that we approve both the July 19 and August 7 minutes.
Cat, I'll second that. All right.
Just I'm sorry. This is this is David jumping in. It's June 19, right?
Yeah, June, yes.
Just to clarify. Okay, sorry. Continue.
All righty. I will vote. I, Kathy?
So if I didn't read them, can I vote?
Um.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, you can vote.
I have no reason not to approve them, but I didn't with the caveat that I did not review them.
So that's a yes?
Well, we need three yeses, so I guess it's a yes.
Tom?
Tom votes yes.
Wonderful. All righty. So move on to the study item, the new review of potential amendments to subdivision regulations. And is it, Tim, is that you? Or David?
Sorry, I was sorry, I was muted. Yeah, that 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 would be me, Matt, I guess. Do you want me to just get the conversation going or introduce this?
Sure. I mean, to me, I mean, I think it's yeah, to me, it seems pretty straightforward, and just seems we just seems like we need to have a conversation about the proposed changes. But yeah, a little bit of a table setting would be good.
Okay. I think that on a, I don't want to say a superficial level, but just sort of the the initial level of review here, it's the amendments are relatively straightforward. And if and in most cases, the amendments are, or I should say, the amendments will probably address most of what comes before the board on a on a on a regular basis. And I can I can point out what what the proposed changes are, of course, subject to review and discussion. This is just a first a first stab at it. But just we should be aware at the outset that this can get extraordinarily confusing. Not unlike quite not unlike quite a few things in New Hampshire land use law. It so so just know that we can very quickly fall down the proverbial rabbit hole with this. And and so, you know, we can, we can, we just have to be aware of that and see how see how we handle it. We could just kind of ignore things, and that's that's how that's not that's not that may not be a terrible choice to make, but but recognize that there are there are going to be scenarios and situations that just there may be unintended consequences. But part of that, part of that, a big part of that, is that the way that subdivision is defined in under state statute, when I included that that the I included that definition or a part of it in the spreadsheet that I here, I'll turn on my camera. I have a new camera. So I included that definition in in the spreadsheet that I sent around that that remember that statutes are just written by politicians. I mean, there there are there are there's legal counsel at 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 the State House, but it's not. Generally speaking, these are just these are laws put together by by just kind of laypeople, and they're not they're not gospel, and they are oftentimes confusing, contradictory, and problematic. And the definition of subdivision is no is no exception. And so that's where a lot of confusion comes in. And so so with that background, I'll just review what is what the idea is with with these current edits. Maybe I'll.
Do you have the ability to put them on the screen?
Yep.
While you're doing that and putting them on the screen, and you're probably going to say this, but what is the driver behind updating our current subdivision requirements? What has been the challenge?
Yep. Good. That's a good question. I think that I think that recently what's what's driven this is, number one, this this issue of whether or not whether or not we want to be regulating condominium conversions. So you know, so recently, the board reviewed an application by for the Treetops building at 67 Etna Road. This is ICV. I don't know how many units it is, but what I can't remember off the top of my head, but. Seventy-five. Seventy-five. Thank you, Dave. So it's 75 units. And and then, you know, we've interpreted the the regulations and and the statute as as allowing the regulation of of condominium conversions, even if there are no even if there are no site changes. And so is that something we want to in not to not to get off track, but I'm not I'm not really sure that's what the statute says. It's really not clear. But let's assume that that's what the statute allows. It allows. Let's assume it allows the municipalities to regulate condominium conversions as subdivisions. Do we do you still want to do that or not? Certainly, in the case of land where you're where you're dividing the land itself by condominium, or you know, that that's, I think that is something we would you would want to continue regulating, but the buildings themselves, I don't I don't know. And then so another example is the board hasn't even seen this yet, but there is a three units. There is a three unit building at I can't remember. I think it's Summer Street. And they are converting to a condominium. And again, no site changes, but we're having we're having them come before the board. The other thing is that.
What zoning district, Tim, what zoning district is that three unit division in?
I think it's R3.
Does that allow three dwelling units per site?
I know. It must be a I mean, I haven't looked into it, but it must be legal nonconforming. And there are plenty of legal nonconforming buildings in that in that area. But but the other thing that's going on is that, and this really isn't necessarily about the subdivision regulations, but there's this disconnect between what we classify as a subdivision for subdivision review purposes and what we don't. So a big, a big example would be 41 Mount Support Road, the Dartmouth Michaels project that was recently approved by the by the board. That was, I what 300 units, David, whatever, however many hundreds of units, but it was in four separate buildings. And then by contract, and that was that's a major subdivision. So it has to go through the whole, you know, it did the preliminary subdivision review process in that case was waived, but it has to go through both major subdivision review, which is there are a lot of requirements, including all those impact, impact analysis or analyses, in addition to site plan review. But then down the road, just right next door, you have a development that is that is nearly the same size in terms of number of units. And it's but it's but it's it's in one building for for purposes of of zoning and the building code. And because it's in one building, it's not subject to subdivision review. And so that that makes the review process a lot simpler and a lot less onerous on the applicant and takes less of the well, theoretically, take less of the time. So does that make sense? Does that make sense? And so that's a big one that's driving it.
So, Tim, starting from the oh, Dave, was that you?
Yeah, I was just gonna. Again, not to get down the rabbit hole, but just to clarify the question that was made about the the upcoming application to convert three rental units into three condo units. That did receive a variance from the zoning board back in 2005. So it was legally three units, or it is legally three units. They're just turning them from rental units into separately owned condominium units.
Yeah. Thank you, David. So, Tim, I was just gonna follow what you said with just, you know, my kind of perspective, and I think we should start at the top in the work down. And you definitely need to have a conversation about 6.2, with the exception, I think you were kind of pointing to, right?
Yeah.
But and 6.3. But, you know, my kind of perspective on on basically the definition section on the major, minor, and subdivision, effectively, when I was looking at what are what are what are current languages now, it seems like what you guys were kind of doing is just consolidating and eliminating stuff that just didn't need to be written later on.
That's a big, that's a big part. Yep.
It didn't really fundamentally seem to me that, again, in the definition stuff in section five, it didn't really seem like what you guys were suggesting had any really significant changes.
Exactly. Yep, that's exactly right. There are not. Yeah.
Yeah. So why don't we? Why don't we start there then with the section five, the major, minor, and subdivision? Tim, David, I don't know if you have any comments, or if we should just have it opened up to to the committee members.
I'll just say very quickly that the my idea was that and David or Rebecca and I haven't actually had a lot of time. We did. They did review this, but we haven't had a lot of time to talk about it internally. So but but my idea here was 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 to do exactly what you said. It was to make it make it cleaner, eliminate unnecessary language. And there were some there were some verbiage, like in minor subdivision in in minor subdivision, for instance, that didn't I just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, each fronting on it, it just it's unnecessary, or it just doesn't make sense. And so there's consistency in the language now between major subdivision, minor subdivision, and subdivision. There was inconsistency before. But it really doesn't change a whole lot. And in large part, it mirrors the the statutory definition of subdivision, which which, as you may, if you got a chance to look at the spreadsheet, you'll see that most that's what, you know, good, good or bad, that's what most communities do. They kind of just adopt the the state definition with minor tweaks.
Can we see that that subdivision division, that definition?
Yeah, let me hold on a second.
Just needs to it just needs to go up in the page a little. It's the next thing.
Yep, let me. Oh, did I? Did I have?
But you couldn't see it because it was at the bottom of the page.
Can you see that?
Oh, Kathy, are you talking about the proposed subdivision definition change?
Yes. Well, I was the same page we were looking at, only the third paragraph, which was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking about the state definition. Yep, let me.
Needs to be a bit bigger.
Wait. Was that showing you?
There it is. Maybe a little bigger. No. It's still on the bottom of the page. I can't read there.
There we go.
So I don't understand with regard to the Dartmouth Michaels parcel.
Yeah.
And I mean, this the definition makes sense to me, the division of a lot tract parcel. That parcel wasn't divided into more lots, plots, or other divisions of land. So it's confusing to me.
Yeah, it's it is confusing. The I think it is. I agree with you. It does. It does. You have to take a really close look at the definition. It says, the division of the division of a lot tractor parcel of land into two or more lots. Now, these are the statute is suggesting these are separate things, two or more lots, plats, sites, or or other divisions of land for the purpose, whether blah, 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 for the purpose of building development. And so I think I think it's I think that definitely does include, you know, reading it once or twice. I think I think it definitely does include multiple.
I don't think so, because it says the division of that real property, which is land, for the purpose of doing thus and so. Well, the purpose is there, but the division isn't there. And the division of that real property is the definition. So to me, it doesn't.
I had the same question, Kathy. I had the same question.
Well, but yeah, not to jump too far ahead, but I do think, I mean, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's the purpose of the amended 6.2, right? With the exception.
Well, before we go there, if you don't mind, I think I think I think we need to clarify this, because, I mean, Kathy, are you suggesting that that the definition of subdivision? There's only a subdivision if you create lots, if you create new lots?
I'm suggesting, from my meager knowledge, that the definition of subdivision seems accurate. But that we might need another category for a development like Dartmouth Hitchcock and Michaels, because they didn't divide it. Now, you think, remember the old Carter Country Club project as a subdivision? They were dividing that into individual lots that they would build houses on that people would buy. That fits the definition of a major subdivision, because they're dividing the land for the purpose of building and selling properties. But I think we may be missing a category.
Well, Kathy, I mean, I.
What category? What category are we? I I'm not.
Development without subdivision.
Well, but I think if I look at the what the so Kathy, if I look at this and I look at the state's definition in the RSA, see, I would think that in the in the Dartmouth case, I think the word site, I would argue that they divided their land into however many sites they did for their various buildings.
Yeah, but where would you where would the site be? You can't outline the site.
Well, I think they did in their plans. I.
There's no parameter. How many sites did they have?
So, so Kathy, what's the in the statute? What is the difference between a lot, a plat, a site, and other division of land? What's the difference? If it's just a lot, then it should just say a lot. The statute necessarily implies that those things are different. So what? So what is a site?
Vision. If they divide it, don't you have to identify the parts of the division? You can't identify them. How many parts did they divide it into?
Like, like, I think.
At least four.
Well, at least four, five, six, seven. I mean, how do you know where where you couldn't walk? You couldn't go out there and walk off the divisions.
I think the individual.
Airport district, you know, where they have the pad sites outlined, but there's then the common land owned by the city around and underneath. It's it seems a little bit like that.
Well, let's let's. Let me just say one thing. There's no there's no question that under the there's no question that under the RSA, that the 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 Michaels development is a subdivision. That's that's not debatable. What? But but the good news is that we don't have to call it a subdivision. We can call the the board can call whatever it wants. It does not. That doesn't have to be a subdivision. It is under the statute, but we can have a more narrow definition of what a subdivision is. So that that so just I just want to be clear that just because the statute says something, just because the statute is incredibly broad, doesn't mean that we have to have an incredibly broad definition.
Well.
Yeah. I'm just saying that in in the airport section that Rebecca was referring to, you can go out there and survey the open space and find out where it is and find out where any individual company's lot or pad is located. And I presume that's what Mr. Campion is proposing to do over on his old Etna Road or Etna Road project that he briefly brought before us a while ago. And even in the subdivision where I live, where we own our individual lots, there's a great deal of land around the outside of the development that's called community open space, but we know exactly where it is. That that's a subdivision. I'm just saying that there seems to be another category that we have not yet defined that involves properties that don't make distinct measurements of where the divisions are like the Michaels property. And maybe that's not what we're talking about today, but I'm just saying it. It doesn't seem to to fit in my mind. It just doesn't seem to fit.
Yeah, no.
Not that it's not reg not properly regulated over under that statute, but that the definition of it just doesn't seem to be clarified.
Well, I, you know, I think that so I think that the 6.2 that you guys drafted, I think, works for this case, because basically it suggests it's taking what was already an exception, which basically was pointing to, you know, shopping malls or industrial parks, I think, basically. you know, shopping malls or industrial parks, I think, basically, um, were the examples kind of given. And basically specifically including multifamily dwelling complex. Um, basically saying if it's, yeah, it, it, that, it won't be, it will not be required when it's one, when more than one building.
Right.
On a lot, single owner, including but not limited to, and specifically saying multifamily dwelling, um, complex, um, which I think is good. And I think that the second part, with the provided that ownership of the buildings is not separately conveyed by condominium or by long-term lease. I think that, um, that makes sense. Also, although, 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 interestingly, if I'm reading this right, the, in this exception as drafted, the Dartmouth one actually wouldn't be accepted because of the fact that Michaels doesn't, Michaels what? They have a lease on the, they have a lease on the buildings. They don't own the built thing. They don't own the land and they only have what? Like a 99 year lease on the buildings?
Still fits in here as an exception. I think.
Except that provided the ownership of the buildings is not separately conveyed by commit- or by long-term lease.
They're not separately conveyed. It's, they're, I think they were conveyed by an entirety, weren't they?
Yeah, I think so. I think, I, I, that's a good, that's a good thought, uh, Matt, but I think, um, I think the, the entire.
Yeah.
Although maybe, uh, yeah, it is, it is an interesting question though, because I, I bet that it was only a portion of that property that was leased, that was leased to, um.
Yeah, although, although, although how many times is that realistically ever going to happen? I mean, like that, that's actually rare. It's rare for colleges to even, like, it's really, what Dartmouth did is actually really rare among colleges to even do what they did. Like most developers do not like just taking a lease on college-like buildings. So I mean, like, I don't think, I, I, I would be surprised if we saw it again.
But back to Matt's question, Tim.
Yeah.
If this had been an approved exception on the books, when Dartmouth came forward with that Michaels proposition, they would not have had to go through subdivision review with the planning board?
They definitely, they, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have had to go through, um, major subdivision.
Okay.
But it's possible, it's, it's possible it still constitutes a minor subdivision, which isn't really that big of a deal, but. Because if you're.
Because I can't imagine a, a project, a project like that not having to come before the planning board. And this exception seems to say that it would not have had to.
It is where I do site plan.
Basically, the answer, yes, the answer, the answer is yes, but, but there's, there's just a slight nuance to that. And, and that is, um, I'm trying to, trying to get, um. Let me, be- because this is, this is, this is interesting. Um, this will give you an idea of, of why, uh, uh, you know, the complexity, the, the, the potential complexity of this, that maybe we, we address with additional exceptions. So, um. Let me see if, no, wait, wait, wait.
Well, it made a comment just saying that, but it would have had to go through site plan review. Is that, that true?
Would it have gone, would it needed to have gone through site plan review? Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Even if it fell through under this exception.
Exactly. Yep, just like, just like, just like Saxon Properties.
Okay, all right.
Guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can't hear me? Okay.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to confuse the problem even more perhaps. Uh, so the Dartmouth property has four buildings that are built on it. Across the street, there is another property that has several buildings on it, which I'm assuming they both had to go through the same, uh.
Right.
Okay, right. But the one that, uh, is to the south of the Dartmouth one, I think it is.
You mean Timberwood?
Yes, uh, the Timberwood is just to the east, right? That's across the street.
Yeah.
What's the name of the, the other property that's being developed? The long building that's casting a shadow.
Saxons.
Okay, here's, here's the problem that I'm seeing, and that is the, the two properties that I really like. There are separate buildings, four separate buildings on the Dartmouth one and, and across the street. The other property, uh, having separate buildings are more aesthetically pleasing. Are we not giving an advantage to somebody to come in and build a 1960s, uh, uh, Soviet Union structure? By exempting them from any of the other things that these other properties have to go through? And how do we, how do we influence contractors or builders to make sure that they're doing aesthetically pleasing structures and not just huge, you know? As long as I've got it all joined together as one building, I don't have to worry about, you know, any type of, uh, uh, worries about it being a, you know, development, a, a large development or a small development. And I, and I don't see anything here in any of what's being proposed that influences the direction that somebody should go. And more pleasing aesthetic building, but rather giving somebody else an advantage to be able to say, let's just build one big huge thing and then we don't have to worry about. So as we're, as we're going through this process, it makes it needed. Everything needs to be defined in a way that really gives us some control over making sure that we are having it designed for the future of this city the way we want it to be designed.
Hey, um, Tom, um, this is Tim. Uh, so on, on the screen right now, we, we have the exception that we were talking about. And so let's, let's just say, just, just, just for the sake of argument, let's say that, um, let, let's just say the, the Saxon Partners project, they wanted to do multiple buildings, but they, but they chose, but they, they chose a, 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 the design that they ended up choosing because they wanted to avoid going through the major subdivision process. I have no idea if that's true or not. Let's just, just for the sake of discussion, let's assume that was, that was the case. They built one building because they wanted to avoid major subdivision. Well, this exception, this proposed exception would addresses that, would address that hypothetical theoretical situation. What, what this.
Let me, let me come confuse that just a little bit in saying, yes, the do not risk the run down the road of the attorney telling us that if that were taken before the Supreme Court, it wouldn't be upheld because, uh, we didn't, we took an exception and we mandated it that they follow that exception as opposed to what's written as the, as the regular enforceable code. That's my, the, the, the big problem I see is that we're now being thrown into because over 20 years on one, uh, code that we've got. Nobody paid any attention to it. Suddenly now the new board is there and we're paying attention to it. And because, uh, it hasn't been enforced for the last 20 years, now all of a sudden, uh, we're told that if it would go to the Supreme Court, the same kind of situation is going to exist for Lebanon that existed for Hanover with the athletic facility. And, and I, I guess from my standpoint is that it, I would rather that we have a strong code that enforces the direction we want things to go. And if somebody comes to us and says, well, I understand what you want to do, but here's this really good design. It's in this long, long uh, building that's really going to meet what the city needs, that we can exempt them from something that's going to be a requirement for the direction and the, and the appeasing or pleasing, uh, designs that we want to have for the city. That I, and I, I know I'm expressing it in a, uh, rather, uh, incomplete fashion. But I, this is the one thing that is bothering me time to time again, is that we're looking for building structures to provide housing. And that's one aspect of what we should be doing, but we should also be looking at how do we ensure that the community that we're all going to be living in is going to be one that people are going to be pleased to be living in, not just housing people.
So I don't know if this answers your question, Tom. In fact, it might do just the opposite, but the exception, the proposed exception here would have, if it had been in effect before Timberwood and Dartmouth Michaels projects were presented, would have exempted them from having to go through the subdivision process as well. It, it, they would be more in the same category as the Saxon proposal. But whether that would have affected whether they did multiple buildings or one long building, gigantic building, um. I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure.
Let me, let me jump, let me jump in here. Can I, can I jump in here? We're talking about a couple of different things here. There's two different sets of regulations. The, the exception that we're talking about here relative to the subdivision review does not impact the fact that they have, would have to still go through site plan review. All of these projects go through site plan review. The Michaels project went through site plan review. The Timberwood project went through site plan review. Saxon is going through site plan review. The way to address some of what you're talking about, Tom, I think, is to, uh, bolster the site plan review regulations, if you want, to include some of the requirements that are currently listed in the subdivision regulations. So that it, it, it dis- I don't want to say disincentivizes, but that's kind of the, the, the thought. Right now, i- if we didn't do that, then there's certainly a, um, an incentive for somebody to propose one giant building to avoid the subdivision regulations. If we change the site plan requirements so that the review is much more comparable than just going through the site plan process, we'll get the board the information that it needs. It'll get the app, uh, and it will, it will, it will not have such an incentive to try to do something specifically to avoid the subdivision review process.
And David, I, I think that makes perfect sense. I like what you just said, that, I guess what I'm thinking is how do we, as the planning board development committee, look at the regulations that we are trying to address and see what ramifications those have with other regulations that we have? And if we've got concerns to then address those concerns in what we're currently doing that's before us. That, that's where I'm going is that the idea that we're addressing one thing today, but it's not addressing, uh, another aspect of what we want to try and, and address, then leaves that just hanging out in nowhere. And we don't, and may never get back to it. And then it never ends up being something that is addressed and we just continue, you know?
That's, yeah, that's on staff. You're being taught, you're, you're being presented with information about the subdivision regulations today. We would bring back the sort of corresponding changes that ought to be made to the site plan regulations for review by this subcommittee another day. And then we bring them all forward as a single package to the full board for consideration. We wouldn't, we wouldn't actually amend the subdivision regulations with this change unless and until we're ready to amend the site plan regulations with the other corresponding changes that need to be made.
And can I just comment too? The training that we had the other day.
Kathy, I'm going to take a, after the definition section, go through that first. And then we can get back to the exceptions because I think we should at least get some agreement on the, the new language first.
But I just want to make a comment if I could.
Okay.
One of the things that happened when we were all new board members, I now confess, I'll, I'll talk about myself. Maybe it wasn't true of other new board members. I didn't really understand the different process of the conceptual review, the design review, and then the actual submission of the plan. I think, referencing Tom's concern, that we as a board can be much more involved when people come through with a conceptual presentation and a design. To ask questions and make comments about, uh, what we see as attractive and not attractive. So that they don't draw up a plan that doesn't meet something that we find, um, positive. I, if that makes sense, that, that we kind of wait until they present the plan to comment on the different features. And then we end up with things that are kind of a fait accompli. Um, so anyway.
No, thank, thank you, Kathy. Um, so let's just go to the definitions for a second and for major minor and just general subdivision. Um, so I guess my only real, I mean, again, as I kind of said before, to me, what's that Kathy?
Can we see them again? They're there.
You know, as I, as I said before, when we kicked it off, you know, to me and Tim, you seem to reflect this, that I didn't really see any significant changes in the definitions. It seemed to be some consolidation, getting rid of some B, the B C D stuff that was in, in there already, because it's already mentioned, you kind of. It's already mentioned in the RSA and you kind of incorporated it a bit into the new definitions. So my only real question I suppose is, um, are there, is there anything, you know, from our untrained eyes, is there anything, are any, are any of these changes significant enough that we should know about them before we say we like them?
In, in, uh, major, minor, Matt? And some, in all three? I, I would say no, there's nothing, I would say, I would say the answer to that is no.
Okay, that's, that was kind of what I thought. Um, I guess Kathy, I mean, you know, from, from my perspective, that they seem fine to me. Kathy, Tom, do you have any thoughts on these new definitions?
The major subdivision definition is not a sentence. It would be correct if it parroted the language in the minors instead of saying or which, because there's no which to begin with. It's so it should say, and not involving it, or so it should be involving requiring new streets or something like that. That or which requires is not grammatically correct.
Well, I guess, Tim, is the idea that if, if it's a, if it requires new streets, it, it's automatically a major subdivision?
That, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying it should, it should say, and involving new streets instead of or which requires, because there's no which or which in there.
Um, it, I, I think, I think the light, what, what that's suggesting is that, uh, if there is a division of a lot that involves only two or more lots, plats, sites or other divisions, blah, blah, blah. That requi- but, but which also requires new streets, then that would be considered a, a major subdivision. But, um, you, um, we can definitely, um, we definitely take another look at the, at the verbiage though.
It just, it just can't have that or which, that, that's not grammatically correct. It'd say or which, or, or requiring new streets or something like that.
Okay, okay.
Which that doesn't belong there.
All right. Yep.
That makes sense. On, on, Tim, on minor, um. So here's my question with minor. So let's say you have somebody who is dividing their land into, let's say, two lots. But let's say they front a. What if they front a road that, um, there's, um, we will want them to put a sidewalk. I'm trying to think of a situation where this would make sense. I say, you know, it, 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 there it says nor the creation of any public improvements. If, if for some reason, there's a, there's a minor subdivision that involves, I'm trying to think if there's a scenario where this would work, where there's this minor subdivision that also ends up having sidewalks being built. I guess that probably wouldn't happen. Does that make, does my meandering mind make any sense?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's a good question. I, I mean, I, I.
I guess, for example, like something like sidewalks, does that absolutely major subdivision? I don't think it does.
I don't think it does either. I think that's a good, I think that's a good point. David, do you have a thought on that?
Sorry, I was typing up, uh, some notes from the last portion of the conversation. What do we, what's the statement?
Sidewalks of public improvement. I think that's what Matt was referring to.
Yeah.
We, we do do that in site plan review as well.
David, I guess what I was saying is like, under the new definition of minor subdivision, at the very end, it says, uh, not involving any new street or extension of municipal facilities, nor the creation of any public improvements. I was. This, you know, a division of land to let's say, two parcels or two lots or whatever, two, two sites, two building sites, let's say. And for some reason it doesn't get exempted. And let's say that, um, there's maybe going to be a sidewalk put on it because we would like them to put a sidewalk based on where the subdivision is. If, if we ask them to put in the sidewalk, would that automatically take this to a major subdivision? And would we want, like, for example, sidewalks to automatically turn something into a major subdivision? I guess that that's what I was, I'm not really.
I think that's a great question.
I'm not sure that there'd be too many examples when this might happen, but it, I.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Seeing public improvement.
My thought on that is that I, I think Rebecca just noted that adding site plan, adding sidewalks on the, on, on individual projects is, is often, is frequently part of the site plan review process.
Right.
The subdivision process, you're just taking one lot and you're splitting it into multiple lots. I, I, I would like to think that. I, I, I would like to think that if, if the board wants a sub, uh, wants a sidewalk, site oh man, I'm struggling. If the board wants sidewalks along that exist, what is otherwise an existing street, then it it would be better to handle that at the site plan review process.
Okay, so Dave, that makes a lot of sense. Basically, if in their plans, they're not going to put in any public improvements in their plans, then it's fine. It wouldn't, it would, it would, it could be a minor subdivision. And then once we get to site plan, we could talk about sidewalks and it wouldn't have affected subdivision.
I think that's right.
Okay, but what's an example, but what's an example of of a public, so then what's an example of this then? I guess I'm kind of asking David. Yep, but that would be municipal facilities. Water and sewer would be the extension of municipal facilities.
Curbing? Or or maybe like a uh, or maybe like a um, no, yeah, I can't really, or like if they build a driveway and they have to put in a um uh, what's the thing that like drains water along a road? What's that thing called?
Yeah, that's stormwater.
But that's
municipal facilities.
You know, and and a lot of that stuff is going to be in the right of way.
Yeah.
And and but, but, but even still, even still, it's, is that really, I mean, creation, that is a question. I, because that's existing language. Do, is the creation of any public improvements, is that language that should be, should be in here? I don't, I don't know that I, that was a question I had originally.
Well, it's in the, it's in the major one, too.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we might want to, yeah, well, we can have that conversation. We we can certainly, we could define what we mean by public improvements.
Yeah.
Relative to this, um, either in this, in this definition or as its own.
Like, I mean, I think about like Yeah. Alright, um, that Kathy, Tom, did you have any comments on the minor subdivision after my little rant?
No, I thought you landed very well, Matt.
Thank you, Tom.
I always love to have a question. So then, does that put that three condominium subdivision into the minor subdivision category? Is that what we're saying?
I think that, I think that's how we incorrectly interpret the the regulations, yes.
Alright, so on to regular subdivision or just, just subdivision generally. Alright, I I, this all makes sense to me. I don't have any red flags. Does anyone else?
Well, um, my question has been like with the condominiums. Um, and maybe this is covered elsewhere, but if they are dividing the building, who, who is still in charge of the common areas and that ownership?
Um, doesn't the condominium document have to refer to that?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
So, and that all gets submitted as part of the application?
It, it's cert- well, the the way the regulation is set up right now, and we'll, I think it's, we may get to this down below, um. Conversion of an existing structure fro- to a condominium form of ownership only triggers review by the planning board to the extent necessary to determine if it's going to have a change in the way that property is utilized. So if it's already three apartments and it's going to become three condos, otherwise, nobody would even know there's been a change in ownership. Then the the review is limited to whether there is going to be a change in the impact of that development on the community. The reason that
Okay.
The the reason that is in there is because um the city's attorney years ago dealt with a project in another community where they were converting sort of a seasonal campground into a year-round condominiumized project. And so the the change from a seasonal campground to a year-round development actually did trigger substantial changes in the way that property was used throughout the year and the impacts that it had on the community. But if it's, i- if there's no substantial, if there's no apparent change in the way the property's going to be used, then there's really not much for the board to review relative to the subdivision. The condo docs go to the secretary of state, I believe, or maybe the attorney general. I forget which one. Maybe it's the attorney general. And condo docs have to be filed with that state agency. And and the question that was asked, yes, they actually, they they do have to accommodate what's going to be ownership, what's going to be common area, and how is the the combination of owners going to provide for that?
Okay.
For, 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 to to manage those common facilities like parking or the lawn or whatever else.
The streets.
If there are streets, again, this is, this is, that's not going to be the case with this three lot or three unit conversion.
One of the things that people don't understand, and it may not be within our purview. We, we think of condominiums as like twenty units, forty units, a hundred and fifty units. We think of, you know, people buying a condo in a big development. But recently, there are a lot of like three-unit condos. Mortgage companies won't let the same owner get a mortgage to own two of those three, so you have to be a cash buyer. And when you have a three unit and and somebody owns two of them, the, actually, the third owner has absolutely no voice in expenses or anything else that's done. I mean, this is maybe not part of our purview, but it's a, it's an area where people don't really understand what they should understand about small condos.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's an issue for the attorney general uh and their review.
Okay, so actually, do we want to talk about the, do we want to jump then to the condo section and talk about that and we can jump back to the exceptions?
That's fine.
Okay. Um, so condos is section six under jurisdiction, six point three. Um. So basically, David, as you said earlier, basically, under this rewritten thing, that you, the planning director, would determine whether or not basically the conversion will material alter the nature or intensity of the use of the property. Um, and then basically, there's also an out suggesting that um, any landowner, business board member, any person within thirty days can make a request that would call on the board basically to look at it, right?
Yeah, that's right. Right now, the board's involvement, it's, it's, it's the struck red language there, shall be limited to such reviews it deems necessary to ensure that the underlying use. We think, we think staff can make that determination and and save the board the, the need to review anything if 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 there's no apparent change uh or alteration in the, you know, created by the conversion.
Now, the only question, oh, sorry, David, sorry.
I was just gonna say, if there is, then it absolutely, it it would and should go to you, to the board.
I think this makes, um, the, I think this makes a lot of sense. The only thing I would say is, and we can deal with this maybe next year. But if, if we, if the board does create uh the technical review thing, um, I, which would be run by staff, I'm assuming this kind of would be fallen to that, or we could make it fall into that somehow, or if we wanted to or not.
I think there's an extra not in there. It says, where no physical changes to the property are proposed, subdivision approval shall only be required if the planning director determines that the underlying existing use of the property will not be materially altered. I think it is will be materially altered. Says subdivision approval shall only be quite, be required if the planning director determines that the use of the property will be maternity materially altered. That not should be in there, should it?
Yeah, Tim, weren't we going to change only to not?
Yep.
So subdivision approval shall not be required if the planning director determines that the underlying existing use of the property will not be materially altered by the conversion.
Okay, so that, that makes sense.
So, yeah, I think, I, I think, again, this makes a perfect sense um as a, as a, as a as a way to go. I think it's perfectly reasonable that the planning director would make this determination. Um, and to, and David, I was just one, I was just curious if this is the kind of thing that would fall into the technical thing, but I think we probably doesn't, don't even need it to go there. Probably can just be as you guys wrote it.
Um, I'm not sure the technical review committee would, if if it, if it's a situation where it is a subdivision because there is a material difference, then I think that would have to go to the full board, not a technical review committee. Because if there's a plat to be recorded at the end of the project, that must be signed by the planning board chair. And only the, only the full board can authorize the chair to sign.
Right, okay. Uh, Kathy, Tom, do you have any thoughts on on this proposed language for condominium conversion?
Uh, not really. I, you know, I think it, it actually made sense to me when I read it before the meeting and it makes sense to me now. I, I guess the only comment that we have, and I wasn't taught by the nuns, so my wife was, and she would say having a double negative is probably the wrong way to state it, if they're not a, a positive way to state it instead of not, not. Uh, and I would just throw that out to anybody who might be, you know, a grammatician, but I'm not. Not.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of described as a negative in one section and a positive in the next sentence. Let's see, subdivision approval shall only be required if the planning director determines that.
Well, yeah, I think, I think, I think.
Will be materially altered. Okay, so you took that not out then, right? The red knot is coming out.
Right.
Well, either way, yeah, I I, I think, I think, um, I think, Tim, you can kind of just take a peek and make sure it's as clear. Um, right. As as clear as it can be made.
Yep.
Um, do we want to pop, pop back up to the, to the really juicy stuff? Six point one, well, six point one's not juicy. Or six, there is no, yeah, six point one, that's not juicy. Um. Do people have any concerns about the the six point one jurisdiction in general? I mean, I, I thought the edit made perfect sense and was, I like, I like that it's a short sentence, so I'm very happy with six point one.
So are we now removing the RSA reference completely? I, that was another thing I thought there had been some staff discussion about.
Well, I mean, I don't really need, I mean, it, it's state law, right? So it governs everything we do, so we've made, probably doesn't, I mean. It, I, I, I mean, is it, is it just, I mean, is it um unnecessary to be in there because it's, it's obviously the law?
Um, yeah, I, I, the only reason I I took it out is because um, I just want to make it clear that we're not adopting the fullest uh and most expansive definition of subdivision um as as would, as might be permissible under RSA six seventy-two, uh, six seventy-two, uh, two fourteen. But I think we were gonna, I think we were gonna add that back in here. Uh, so actually, let me, that's what we were gonna do. Wasn't, it wasn't there. We were gonna add it back into the definition of subdivision. Because there are, just as a guidepost, because there are perhaps some, you know, these, these, you know, these may possibly be relevant in a world at some point, so just, just to add, we'll, we'll fold that back in 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 the definition of subdivision somehow.
Okay, well, if Kathy and Tom don't have any other concerns, we can, we can get head, go, we can go for full circle and go back to the exceptions conversation. Um, and I have one question for Tim and David about that.
It's moving so fast, I I have no idea what we're looking at.
So this is back to, you know, to, so I'll just, I'll read what it's, the proposed language, and then I have a, I have a question. So six point two A exceptions, subdivision review shall not be required for developments consisting of more than one building erected on a lot in single ownership, including but not limited to a multifamily dwelling complex or a shopping mall, provided that ownership of the buildings is not separately conveyed by condominium or by long-term lease. So my question is, why did you delete industrial park?
I, I, I deleted industrial park and 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 that's not, I don't think that's something we specifically uh, we discussed, we specifically discussed internally, but um I deleted that because it, it, if you have an industrial park where you are, you have a single piece of land and you, you're constructing multiple buildings and you are deciding that you are going to convey those buildings by condominium or by long-term lease, what you're effectively doing is circumventing the subdivision regulations. So there's no, there, there's, I'm imagining a situation where there is, there, there would be no reason to have subdivision regulations if you could simply avoid them by dividing the land or the buildings in a way um that gets you what you want, but doesn't actually create separate lots. And so, and so that's why it doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make any sense to have industrial park in there.
I, I would disagree with that.
You lost me.
Um, because, and the only reason I would disagree with that is because we had an application here several, many years ago now, where it was going to be multiple buildings on a single lot in single ownership. And it was like a, it was like a campus for this, a single business to occupy all three buildings. And so in that case, it was more than one building erected on a lot in single ownership. They weren't uh, subleasing or or condoizing or anything else, the buildings. They were going to occupy all three. And so the, the, that industrial park uh clause.
But that's not industrial park. Sorry.
It wasn't, it, it was an industrial park.
I, no.
It was up, it was up at the airport. It was in, it was in the industrial park.
But that doesn't mean that that development of that site, that's just a site plan with multiple buildings. What am I?
Right, that's, and that's what this exemption takes it out of the subdivision review. It still has to go through site plan.
I thought that's what Tim said.
Uh, well, David, I, then, then, then you, I'm not, okay, the only thing, I agree with what you're saying, that that's something that shouldn't um, that shouldn't trigger subdivision, but I don't like the word industrial park. I, I, can we, maybe we can just think about a different description, because why, that's maybe we can just thi- think about that.
That, that makes sense. That, that makes sense to me. I think we could easily use different language. I, I think we should get rid of shopping mall, just because I, I think the, the days of shopping malls are behind us.
Well, they, they probably are, but we, what we're thinking of is, uh, well, let me take that back. I don't, I, I don't know if they are, they aren't, but if they are, um uh, it, it, what, the issue, what we're thinking of is, is an example like Upper Valley Plaza uh where you have, you know, where you have the L-shaped building and then you have the, the separate building with Old Navy in it. Um, you know, those are, those are usually, it, those are almost always in common ownership and then they lease out the individual spaces, so.
It also applies to Home Depot and Golf and Ski. And for you in the driving range, it also applies to the Weather Vane and the new liquor store site. Uh, there's, there's reasons, in spite of whatever might happen to shopping mall as a concept, I, I think there's reason to leave that in.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Um, and although frankly, these are just kind of examples, right? I mean, it's including but not limited to.
I'm trying, there's so many, it, it, you, uh, all these knots, you know, it's like so subdivision review shall not be required for, and then you get down to multifamily dwelling complexes. So can, can we name one of those to kind of flesh it out a little bit?
Timberwood? Rivermere?
Four one Mount Support Road.
Four oh one Mount Support.
Okay, so subdivision review shall not be required for Timberwood is basically.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that kind of comes back to what David was saying, like, if that, if that's what we're going to say, then we need to amp up certain aspects of the site plan review that um ensure we're, we're handling them similarly to the ones that would require a subdivision review.
Correct. We don't want to provide for a, a less thorough review just because we're bypassing subdivision. We want to make sure we have the thorough review that we think we need, but accommodate it all through the site plan regs rather than having this split of some things covered by subdivision, some things covered by site plan, et cetera.
And, yeah, and David, yeah, and and David, Tim and Rebecca, I mean, I, I would assume that that will be, I mean, that that will be, I mean, I would think that if we do that, if we, if we make this exception, but then we beef up the site plan regs, that, that would be a, a, a more elegant, simpler, easier way of going about this than what is currently exists, right?
Yeah, I think so.
My, my one question related to that is, these can still be sizable projects. Would you only be able to do a notice of regional impact um, under subdivision review? I, I don't know if that's something that can be applied to site plan review.
It's already in the site plan.
It is, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Tom, does, I mean, I, you, I, I, you brought up some, I, I think some very, you know, valid concerns earlier about making sure that we don't, um, forget anything. Um, does, does what's being discussed make sense to you in terms of like, if we were to edit the exception to, to write like this, but then before the board would do anything like this, we would take a really good look at the site plan regulations to make sure that if someone were, for example, to bypass subdivision and go straight to site plan, that the site plan regulations were sufficient to basically, you know, that, that basically there wouldn't be any, you know, it wouldn't be Swiss cheese, there wouldn't be big holes people would be falling through.
Yeah, I guess the only, the only thought that I have regarding this is, um, so we're talking a subdivision shall, uh, review shall not be required for developments consisting of more than one building erected on a single, on a lot in single ownership. Is there a definition on the size of lot? I mean, could I own a lot that is actually 60 acres? Or, or, uh, what is the definition of a lot itself?
Six acres could work, couldn't it?
Sixty, yeah, hundred thousand. It doesn't, it's not related to the size of the parcel.
Right, so it, should there not be something that relates to the size?
Well, actually, Tom, that does make me think of one good question, actually, for, for staff. Let's say, that's because I think that's a good point. Let's, let's say that there was a big subdivision. Um, let's say, for example, Dartmouth's, uh, four oh one. Let's say four oh one was in a place that actually, you know, wasn't backing up to a huge amount of woods. Let's say that they were going to build their four apartment buildings in a, uh, in a more densely developed area. If they're, if they're, if they were going to do what they did, but it was going to connect, let's say we're, either roads were going to have to be built or something that would involve, you know, let's say roads, which would, which would bump something to a major subdivision. If, if, let's say something is being subdivided, it's going to have multiple buildings on a big piece of land that's going to require sewers and roadways and stuff like that. Would that trump the exception?
Would you have more than one lot?
No, this is just one lot.
I, I don't, I don't know that it would. Because the four oh one project, I, again, those are, there, there are driveways. There are water and sewer mains. Those are all considered essentially service lines.
Well, what if?
They're, they're not public mains.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think.
Well, let me put it this way, let's, um, I'm trying to think like, um, Centerra, for example, that, that was not, was that when it was first developed all in one ownership?
It was developed as, it was developed, yeah, they created separate lots. It was a, it was a standard subdivision.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I guess that, that Tom's question just made me think if there was like cases, if there was cases where like, it would materially impact like things that would normally be a major subdivision, but, but maybe not.
Well, so, so let me give you two examples, and none of the, neither of these are necessarily going to be the perfect example. There's two government buildings that I can think of. When I was, back in nineteen seventy, I served as an Army Finance Officer, and I served in the Army Finance Operations at Provench and Harrison, which was the second largest building, uh, office building in the United States next to the Pentagon at that time. Now theoretically, if that wasn't a government agency, but that was a single building, uh, operation, let's say Amazon, who owned that property, would there be anything that would, that would require them to go through some kind of major planning, uh, subdivision planning with us before they built this huge structure on, you know, probably at that time, the finance center was on about sixty acres that was owned by the United States government. And, you know, their property was not. So that's where I'm kind of going, is that if somebody owned a huge piece of property, could they just bring a big building onto that property without having to go through any type of subdivision planning to be able to do it, where we would require that if somebody were going to build sixty different buildings on the same sized property?
And they'd do site plan review, right?
Yeah.
It would be site plan review.
Well, they might need building permits too, right?
Oh, of course, yes.
Well, so it, it sounds like to me that, um, the committee is, uh,
Learning a lot.
I'm sorry, Kathy?
Learning a lot.
Yes, well, absolutely, aren't we always? Um, but cautiously interested in this change, but I think, you know, as David said, you know, clearly, we would, this would be a package deal. So I think, you know, I would be interested to see, uh, you know, as staff can, you know, think about what that would mean for our site plan regs. I, I think that would be interesting to see, um, for, for the subcommittee about what we, what we would want to alter or change. And so I think, you know, we probably have a good, I think we've given staff a good amount of information to, to think about, um, what the next time they would approach us with these questions, with, what, 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 what the next, uh, conversation would be. Unless someone disagrees.
Yep, thank you.
I think it really helps us, it really helps us to go through this in detail. So that when we're considering, uh, applications, we understand what, what we're considering.
Yeah, you know, I do have to say, Kathy, I agree with you entirely. I think that, uh, um, first of all, I want to thank Dave and Tim and Rebecca for hanging in there with us, because we really are get, getting a big education regarding this. And I'm oftentimes reminded about how people who are in the business of doing something have to rely on, quite honestly, uneducated volunteers to assist them. That can be very frustrating. And to Tim and David and Rebecca, I don't mean to cause any kinds of frustrations. I just, yeah, uh, you know, these are, these are the kinds of questions that just pop up as we're discussing these things and we're learning about them. So anyway, thank you.
Well, I think that the, um, learning experience helps to inform things, you know, no model of, um, zoning or development happens without volunteer feedback. So it, it doesn't get created in a vacuum, and that's why, um, everyone's input's important.
So I think that probably, I think wraps it up for today. Um, do we want, unless staff has another comment, I think the next logical conversation would be, um, planning the next meeting date. So staff, do we have any, uh, any, anything you else you'd like to chat about today?
I don't think so, um.
I know we have some, I know on the agenda, we have some future discussion items, but I feel like we'll get, we'll get to those in the future, so.
Yeah, I think we just, staff internally, we, we are going to be talking about when to bring some of these topics forward to the full board so that we can get them in front of, uh, uh, ultimately hold a public hearing and, and adopt some of these things.
Well, yeah, I, 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 I think that makes sense. I, oh, sorry, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, because we don't, we're not prepared to do that today. Um, but we'll go back over the, the minutes and the, and the discussions that we've had and start to bring things forward. And, and again, we will bring them, uh, we will try to bring them forward in a, you know, in a package that makes the most sense. Like I said, we're not going to make changes that, um, increase exceptions and, and things for subdivision without properly, um, trying to bolster site plan review at the same time, so that we don't, because we don't want to create loopholes that, uh, that somebody could drive a big truck through.
My, my suggestion would be that the first bit we, we bring to the whole board, maybe be something a little, a little smaller, just to see how kind of it goes and how much time it, it takes, just maybe a couple, maybe some of the things. I, I, I think staff can think about what we've discussed over the last couple of months, and I would try to say, let's maybe try a bite-sized item first. Um, because I think it will, I think it will probably take a good amount of time at the full board to, for any of these changes.
And I think you're trying to parse out. True that I'm really glad to see us addressing the subdivision requirements and, and then next the site plan review requirements, because considering all the demands of those large developments that come before us, that's where I think we really need help and an understanding of the details. And while some of the little parking lot and ped bike things are important, they're really minor details in terms of what, what, what our challenges are to, you know, to be fair and, and, um, comprehensive. So I'm glad to see that the staff will be looking at site plan review regulations too.
Gee, Kathy, that sounds like you might have just endorsed Tim and David's idea of the technical review board.
Well, and that's, and I could mention that as well. I think, um, you know, that, that's an important consideration, whether we adopt it or not. Um, but I mean, this is just my opinion. I think the biggest challenges are these very large, complicated developments, because they have so many aspects, and we don't, I mean, we are not educated to really maybe flesh out all the important things. We could miss something. So the more we understand and the clearer our regulations are, the more guidance, both the applicant and we will have.
Well, and I, and I also think staff, I think we have, we have what now, two or three very new board members, so I think probably, well, I, I think we'll probably have to go either, well, I think we'll have to like dedicate a full, a full planning meeting to this, or we'll have to go kind of slow. But anyway, that's just my, my two cents. Staff, um, thinking about the next meeting, how much ti, I, I, and, and we can have a conversation, you know, Rebecca, next week or whoever about the next agenda, but I'm not sure what you all want to talk about next. I looked at the, the, the future items, but in any case, would you all like, you staff, would you all like this committee to meet in two weeks or maybe three weeks, do you think? Not sure how, how much time you think, you, you'll need to prep the next thing.
Everyone's eager here.
Well, Matt, uh, what's, what's the next thing?
Well, I, 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 I feel like we need, we probably need to have a conversation about that. Um, is, is, I was thinking probably, given what our conversation, probably the, the technical, right?
Yeah, um, maybe, maybe that, that's what Matt and I were going to discuss after this meeting. So, um, Matt, I can, I can be a few minutes late to that, uh, that webinar, so we, we can, we can stay on and talk about that. So.
So do we want to go three weeks then, maybe?
I, I, for, for me, I, I, um, I'm, I'm out a lot of next week, and then, um, it's Labor Day.
Yeah, let's go three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, and I mean, even, you know, Tim, we're going to talk, but even we could have a, we could, I mean, I feel like that's going to be a complicated um, proposal, and I feel like we, we maybe, it may take a couple of meetings, wouldn't you think?
Oh, yeah, that, yeah.
So we can probably also plan to have, you know, that be half of the, the next meeting and something else be the other half or, you know, whatever. So, um.
Do we have to have an understanding in the site plan regulations before we decide on technical review?
Well, I think we can, I think we can talk about, I think we can talk about the, the minor, the technical, I think we can do that before delving into all the sub, the, the site plan regulations. In any case, um, we should, we can plan a meeting anyway. Um, so I think that would be like, how about, what do people have on Friday, September eighteenth?
I'm fine.
Yeah, that's wide open.
Okay, well, uh, why don't we do twelve thirty then on Friday, September eighteenth?
Did you say twelve thirty?
Yeah. Rebecca, does that work for you?
Uh, yes.
Cool. David, do you need a motion for that?
Uh, no, we'll just, that's, we'll just schedule the next meeting.
Great. Well, if no one else has anything to say, then I think we will, uh, call, call it a day.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right, uh, motion and seconded. Um, I, uh, I say yay. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Tom says yes.
All righty, well, thank you all very much.
Did you vote?
Have a nice Thursday.
And I'll try and figure out what sound problem is with my new computer. Sorry, guys.
No worries.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, Tim.